Welcome. This is the September 16th, 2019, meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Tonight's decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, September 20th, 2019. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, September 20th, 2019. The date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, October 6th, 2019. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. First hearing is the 19-024, variance request, front yard setback, Coning, at 47 Robert Lane. Madam Secretary, do you have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we have staff notes. Applicants seeking front yard of 34 feet where 40 feet is required and 39.9 feet exist to construct an attached garage at 47 Robert Lane in an R-18 district. Subject property is a corner lot necessitating variance request to reduce a front yard although dwelling is oriented with proposed garage and what serves as side yard. Submitted zoning location survey dated August 23rd, 2019. Further details proposed variance and reduced front yard only relative to southern corner. Northern corner of proposed garage is conforming. And we also have correspondence dated September 6th, 2019, from the Health Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening. Pull the microphone up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Gina Coning, 47, Robert Lane, Wallingford, Connecticut.
Jason Coning, 47, Robert Lane, Wallingford, Connecticut.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please explain your application, what you're looking to do.
So, we currently live in a ranch and Robert Lane is a dead end and we're on the corner of Robert Lane and Apple Tree, so we're at the dead end. And we're looking to add on a room, like a bedroom and another bath in our home. And I guess because we're in a corner lot, when we did the survey, we found that in order to build it out, so in the survey, one part of our, like where our existing driveway is went to, I think, like 20 feet and one part went to like 12 or something. So obviously we wanted to bring it out to the 20 feet so we can add the bedroom and the bath.
So it's looking like you have two, two side yards or two front yards? Is that what this is, Amy?
They're on the corner lot, so they have two front yards. So in essence, what's serving as the way the house is oriented as the side yard is actually a front yard.
Front yard, correct.
Thus the variance.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, thank you, thank you. So you have two front yards and that's your hardship because of where the lot is and the way that your house is on the lot?
Yeah, I guess the way they measure.
Okay. And so it's gonna be, looks like a 20-foot addition off the side of your house?
Yeah, so we're looking to add a 20-foot addition on the side.
Two stories?
I think it is.
Garage and a story.
Yeah, I guess it's considered two stories because it's the garage and then, yeah.
Yep, very good. Has anybody got any questions? Is there anybody here speaking in favor of the application? Anybody here speak against the application? Do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it is. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve variance of front yard of 34 feet where 40 feet is required and 39.9 feet exist as shown on the plans.
Second.
Oh, and there was also comments from the Health Department received on 9/9/19.
Second.
We have a point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Reference, Mr. Rice, reference in your motion, the actual plans, I believe there was a date, you just said per plans. If you want to amend your motion.
What, with the zoning?
She wants you to, right here. So the date received, August 16th.
Oh. With the date being August 16th, 2019 on the plans. Amended.
That still needs to be amended. I think the date is wrong, right?
Right there. We got the date right here. Yeah, but we're looking at the plans date. She wants the plan date.
I stand corrected, I'm sorry.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Carmody, excuse me.
No problem. Yes.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Tada.
Yes.
Chairman Rusak.
Yes, your application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next up is 19-025, variance request, front yard landscaping for Ortega for KLS School, 3 Technology Drive. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we have staff notes. Applicants seek variance to allow 36.2-foot front yard landscaping at minimum point where 60 feet is required to increase parking area at 3 Technology Drive in IX District. Applicant received variance approval for front yard landscaping at same location in March 2019. Determination and approval were based on limited property boundary survey dated February 7th, 2019, modified and received March 8th, 2019, yet referenced proposed measurements of the survey dated February 7th, 2019, pre-revisions and received February 15th, 2019. Subsequently, as applicant proceeded with site plan approval through PCC, the need to further modify parking area, drive aisle dimensions and spacing requirements necessitated a new variance request as the approval received no longer related to the proposals moving forward. This current request is based on limited property boundary survey dated March 26th, 2019, revised May 4th, 2019. And we also have correspondence from the Health Department dated September 6th, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano, licensed land surveyor and a professional engineer with the firm Giuliano Associates. We maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Elso section of town. As staff notes stated, we were here back in February/March and we received a variance for the front yard landscaping. At the time, we had requested a variance request of 35.4, which was granted. That was the motion, so when we went a little bit further through the approval process, we had to make a change because of planning and zoning review process. And basically looking through the minutes, I thought we were okay because the commission had granted us a variance down to 35.4 feet as per my application. Staff pointed out that what was actually approved was what was depicted on the plan, even though the motion and application didn't state that. Wasn't going to argue the point, I felt it was basically easier to come back and ask you to reapprove the variance now tied into the specific plan. So, here we are, asking you to reapprove a variance, very similar to what you've already granted for a front reduction in the front yard landscaping so that we can move forward with our planning and zoning approval process. I do have a copy of the plan. If there's any questions, I can go through and explain exactly what changed and where the differences are. If not, I can take any questions.
Could you please do that, just so everybody has a understanding about what we're talking about, where the difference was, please?
Okay, so this is the current plan for KLA schools, a bright beginning, it's known by both names. We have Research Parkway on the left side of the map, Technology Drive on the top of the map. Basically, we're coming in, creating a loop circulation for a proposed addition. Originally, we had a narrower drive aisle based upon some parking data. And as we went through the planning and zoning approval process, we realized we had to expand and get another about eight feet for the drive aisles to conform with Wallingford's regulation. What that required us to do is push really this corner or this edge of the parking slightly closer. We're still maintaining 37.4 along the Easterly corner from the parking to Technology Drive, that's identical, but this little row, this portion of parking moved closer. I believe we originally had about 43, 44 feet. At this point, we're now at 36.2. So that's what we're asking. Because of the wider drive aisles, I had to grab another eight feet. Again, I thought I was okay with the language of the prior variance, but again, I wasn't gonna argue. Easier to come back and ask you to modify the approval or reapprove based upon the current plan.
Okay, pretty straightforward. Has anybody got any questions? Amy, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I think the staff comments picked it up and, again, the motions that we've crafted perhaps reference this plan and all are in order.
Okay. Is there anybody here speaking in favor of this application? Anybody here speak against this application? Do you have anything further you'd like to add?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board. I just, whatever we, whatever motion's made, if there is a motion to approve this, the plan is August 16th, 2019 that we're approving, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the plan says August 16th. The staff and the motions here says May 4th.
We're going by the, right, Amy, we're going by the plans date submitted.
The plans that were submitted with this application are the ones you're referencing, which your motions reflect.
Yep.
The earlier plans reference the different version of this plan.
So the plan stamped is received in the planning's office, August 16th, 2019, so that's where we're going.
Yeah. And the motions, it has a different date, that's why, I thought we were using the August 16th also, just wanna make sure.
The plan that was submitted is dated March 26th, 2019, with the revision date of May 14th, 2019. That's what you're referencing for the 36.2 front yard landscaping area.
You should be referencing the date of the name of the plan, not the date it was received.
Right.
That's for identification purposes.
Thank you, Dennis.
Where does that, should be on the corner of the map.
On the corner of the map, on the bottom right.
May 14th, okay. And the motion says May 4th, is that just a typo?
My apologies, that's a typo. So yes, it should say May 14th.
Okay. Well, with that, I can make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Yeah, okay, let it rip.
Alright. I'll make a motion that we approve the variance for front yard landscaping of 36.2 feet at minimum point where 60 feet is required to increase parking as shown on plans, limited property boundary survey prepared for Bright Beginnings Learning Center dated March 26th, 2019, revised May 14th, 2019, subject to the comments of the Health Department, received 9/9, 2019.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Carmody. Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Tada.
Yes.
And Chairman Rusak.
Yes, your application's approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Once he clears, we're gonna go into executive session, so we'll wait for him to...
Point of order, we'll do the discussion first, I believe.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And then, yes.
Okay, this is, the discussion is just a continuation of what we talked about last month? And as far as what we're going to asking and requiring from the planning office when they receive plans and, and I think it was mainly on either A2 surveys or we were really looking for some sort of drawing for what they were looking to add on. And that's, we got one for the first application on Robert Lane. It's good, but again, to me, it's missing still some of the, I mean, we're getting there, we got something, but it's still missing like the height and, I mean, it gives you the addition, some of the dimensions, but myself, I don't know, we'll have a little discussion, I don't really wanna draw this out too much, but I'd like a little bit more. And I don't know if it's possible. And the other thing is, is we saw that Amy has added was this motions piece of paper, which is very helpful, but we all gotta get used to it. I appreciate it. So it's a good addition for us, keep us kinda all uniform on what motions we're making and what's being in it. And I imagine when we talk to Janice later on, she's gonna tell us it's gonna keep us probably a little more legal. But anyways, Amy, you have anything you wanna add in the discussions?
Well, if this may help the discussion in general and our, help from Janice here. What I was gonna do is sort of create a flow chart, if you will, but instead of making it all fancy, just sort of a bulleted list of the process of an application from the moment it walks in the door through the meeting process and the various steps we take and the requirements that we do or don't have. So whether it be staff input into the process, the board's role in the process, the meeting structure, et cetera. And if that helps and along the way, we can, you can kinda say what, just as you said, plans, what can we require, what can we not require? We can benefit from our legal counsel here. Just a thought, I mean, it's six bullet points, but it might help. And then it leading up to the meeting and then you can halt and say, this is maybe where it's falling apart. I also have a copy of our current variance application, which you all receive certainly with submitted plans and things, but there is also two pages of instructions to the applicant and it does detail when and when not and what types of plans are submitted. So if we wanna make changes, this is the time to ask Janice questions, but if you wanna reference that, you could see sort of where we're starting from and where we're moving to.
Okay.
Is that, does that serve you at all?
I know this is a process where it's gonna take more than just, you know, we're not gonna hash this all out tonight, it's gonna be a couple meetings and, and we're gonna see, hopefully improvements what we're getting. But my main goal is that, and this is to help the applicants too, is that we have information in front of us so that everybody is giving us the same information. So it's not like in one application we're approving over not having a drawing and then we're approving something. So, you know, just, I talk, if my neighbor is Ray and I talk to him and he says, oh, I got my garage and this is all I handed in and I handed in and you're requesting something different. I think if we're uniform and everybody gets used to it, it'd be a better process for everybody to understand what we're actually approving. So that's where I'd like to get, and I'm not, you know, like I said, just some numbers so, and it'd be helpful for you guys too, is that we're approving something, you know, we, you're in agreement what we're approving, you know, you understand too. And also, my question is, is it gonna be like pulling teeth to get this or are you gonna, is it gonna be something you're gonna be able to do?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking, and let me, let me tell you my first bullet point and then perhaps, if you will, the first step. And, because there seems to be a question when and when not plans are included and to what level those plans or what information those plans include and what can we require, if I'm not, if I'm understanding correctly, that's really the whole...
You're getting, yeah, pretty close.
I mean, the bottom line is we wanna be consistent for the whole process, soup to nuts, A through Z. Consistency in decisions, consistency in the way we take things in, consistency in the way they're presented. So to that end, at this, the applications to date, when an applicant comes in to apply for a variance, they are asked to provide the A2 survey to locate their boundaries and their existing and proposed proposal, whatever it may be. Typically, when we have things such as a shed or a detached building, when they're not seeking any variance to the height request, it's limited, those have not required detailed plans. When something is oversized, on a special exception, we have asked for those because of the sheer size. And we had one not too long ago, for example, with the steel walls. So, so it's sort of a discretionary in those cases. So those cases, plans are not. Whenever there is a setback issue, they should always be requested or a multitude of variance requests, because there's a very large difference between a three-foot setback for something of a single story and something of two stories or something 20 feet long or something 100 feet long with that three feet. Therefore, further information is required and typically received. If you would like to, and if I'm understanding correctly, the last meeting and now, the question was to pose to Janice whether we could require plans all the time or should require the elevations. But this is where it is now and that's, that's why there is, it is right on the application instructions that they are to provide plans with dimensions and heights whenever there is a question of setback or height variance requested or coverage variance requested. That's step one, that's what they're supposed to do, so...
And I, and I am proposing to get, even on, just, I mean, I know we've been through this before with people who have come in front of us for sheds or have come and gotten something for a shed, maybe they didn't get a variance, but we ended up, it ended up here. I think it was, it was maybe off Apple Tree or something, but anyways, the person built a two-story shed. I don't know if you remember that one.
Oh, yeah.
And anyways, I actually believe we should be getting a drawing depicting what they're building, how tall it's gonna be. So we actually have something that shows exactly what they're building. And that's what I'm, after that meeting, that's what I'd like to see. It's more of giving us more things to look at and to decide on, but at the same time, it holds them to, well, this is what you submitted and this is what you said you were gonna build. So, Janice, is that something that we can...
Yeah, I mean, the A2 survey's required now unless they determine that there should be some exception.
Right.
You don't find an exception, then don't give it. I mean, you know, I mean, I don't understand, well, they should be giving them to you. If they don't give it to you, their application's not complete, it could be denied.
But this is something further than the A2. So this is like, this application tonight, the first one, they gave us their A2 survey, which showed us their boundaries and how far the house was set back and everything else. And so that's fine, but at the same time, they're telling us they're adding on, you know, a garage and an addition above and everything else. So alls we're asking for is, you know, is some sort of drawing that showing, depicting approximately what they're gonna do and what it kinda looks like. Some people come with more sophisticated drawings, you know, actually professional drawings of what they're gonna do, and some people are just drawn out, which is fine. It's an expense, but I would like to see, because we had a couple meetings ago, we had a meeting where people were looking to do something and there was question about dimensions and everything else. So after that, I would like to see in every application, whether it's a shed in the backyard, one-car garage, not attached or whatever, a drawing like similar to what we, they gave us tonight with dimensions, how tall, how wide, how long, whatever, simple dimensions. I mean, it's not hard, they know what they're building. And, and that way there, it's, if we're gonna approve it, we know what we're approving and later on, if they build something bigger, we can go back and say, well, wait a minute, this is what we approved, actually. Because a lot of times, right now, we have approved some garages that we say a two-car garage or whatever and, you know, it goes by the height and we do have a square footage, but that doesn't mean that they're gonna stick to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can ask for the detail that you need and, you know, it is very important that when you grant a variance, you know what you gave them and it's clearly defined. You can't have, it's forever. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't go away, it's a forever thing. So it's important that someone 70 years from now know what the variance was. So if you need more detail, you get more detail. And if you think that that should be, I mean, the height of the building probably, I mean, that's a relevant fact, so why shouldn't they have told you what it was? And then they're bound by it. You know, I mean, I had a, I went to the Supreme Court to argue what a variance from the 70s meant. Can you imagine that, from the 70s? I went to the Supreme Court because, no, you couldn't tell what it was, it was a use variance, it was how, what was included in this variance. So it's very important that you know what you're giving and it's clearly defined and documented. That's to everyone's interest because it is forever.
Yeah, well, I mean, in the past, we've relied on building regulations because there are building regulations for height and how high and the whole bit. That all comes into play. And I know Amy, when she's talking to people, when they're coming for an application, that is explained to them. But, this is, this is what I would like.
I mean, it's, it sounds to me like certainly, if you're giving someone a variance to put on that type of an addition, if I were sitting up there, I just wanna know, well, how big, how tall is this thing gonna be? I mean, that may be, it sounds like a relevant factor or not to whether you give the variance or not, that may impact your decision. So, and once they give you that information, that's, that's the basis of the variance and it's documented. I mean, the best thing is to have everything you need on that survey, but whatever you need additionally. And, you know, if they come here and you're having a conversation with them and you think there's more information that you need or want, you tell them. Say, we're gonna continue it a month while you go get this additional information. You need to know, you know, what you're giving them and you wanna make sure that they're bound by what they say.
But if we request this, and I'm gonna finish in a second and let everybody else have their chance here. Amy, one of the things I would really like, and I don't know, we've had this discussion because you're part-time and you're not in the office, so, you know, it's hard for you to police this and I, I get it, I do. I wouldn't wanna see an application unless we have all this, because it just makes it harder for us, especially when we have multiple applications for multiple things or same things. Say we have three garages one night and say, one out of the three doesn't give us the paperwork, it's not fair to the other people that had all the paperwork. So how difficult is this gonna be for you, for you guys?
Well, what I think you're asking, if I'm understanding correctly, and then this again, this opposed to counsel, is whether or not you're asking for everything on the front end as part of the application. Is it an incomplete application if we don't get this?
Well, the...
I mean, I can get it, can't we require it?
There are some regulations that say if it's not complete, it doesn't go forward. Whether or not, you know, there are time requirements, as you know, in the statute and the statute doesn't talk about whether something is complete or not. So you have to start the public hearing within 65 days, I think it is, of receipt of that application. So, is it 65 or 30?
65.
65. So, you know, if an application comes in and the staff determines it's incomplete, I mean, the staff can indicate that, well, it may go on the agenda just to get the process rolling, but it's not complete and it won't be, if it's heard at all, it's just to talk about as an introductory way. I'll take another look at whether or not you can just say, it's not complete, it's not gonna be accepted. I think there's some disagreement as to whether or not the statute permits us to do that. I understand it entirely and I think it's a valid concern, so I could take a look at that for you. But you certainly can, and they could be told right up front, say, you know, you're missing six things on this application, we're gonna take the application because the statute says you take the application, but it's not complete and it's not going anywhere or it's not going very far, in fact, could be denied for being incomplete, so you need to get it complete and it probably will not be heard until the following meeting. I mean, those are the kinds of conversations that you can have. You can, if somebody comes here and they didn't do what your application requires them to do, you can deny them for that reason, that it's incomplete. You don't want to, but it's, you know, they're told in advance what they need to have and if they don't have it, you can continue it to the next meeting, you can give them the time, but it, you know, if somebody says, well, I'm not gonna give it to you, well, then that actually is a basis for denying something.
I mean, I understand where you're going, but I also look, we're here to serve the public, we took these appointments, understanding what we're doing, but at the same time, our time is valuable too.
Right.
And to, lately, we've had two, three applications, sometimes we've had a run, I think once, we had seven or something. But, you know, if one or two out of the three or... But, you know, if one or two out of the three or one out of the two is incomplete, to me, it's like, you know, you're wasting our time because you don't want to, you don't want to or whatever. But I also understand, just trying to find out what kind of burden this is going to be on Amy in the planning office and we'll wait for your discussion, your decision on how we can go forward. So I'm going to end my, I think I've covered what I'm looking for. Has anybody got anything they'd like to add? So we'll go ladies first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question, if we do begin to require the drawings, is that something that needs to be noted in the motion that we're approving the specific drawing or the dimensions that are noted on that drawing?
Well, the details of your application is not, it's not in the regs or is it for a variance?
The, well, the drawings are just to show the expanse or the magnitude, if you will, of the variance that they're requesting because the A2 is a footprint. So, and we, and the perfect demonstration of that is what happened a couple of months ago with, the only reason we knew there was a second story involved, it was not conveyed in the application, there was no plan submitted, it was strictly the survey and the survey said, we want to add to our garage, make an addition and add to our garage. It was a neighbor's letter in favor of it that said, that I quit because I will review the application. So I will try to pick up, if they're not at the onset of submission, I will also gather more information prior to coming to the meeting. So there's more steps that I'm still willing to, of course, do to get plans and things. But this neighbor's letter said, we support, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Smith's second floor expansion of their house. We think it's wonderful. And I went, second floor? Wait a minute. There was nothing, so what, there was, there was nothing to convey that. So therefore the plans...
Well, but that's a, that's a basic, I don't really understand why that doesn't come out in the course of reviewing this, that there's a second floor to a structure. I guess maybe you asked that question. I don't, I'm not sure I understand why that wouldn't come up during this process. I don't.
It came up during the meeting.
We really need to beef up your application because I think that that pretty much is a basic thing.
Yeah, and I think that's where my question comes in because if we're looking only at the A2 survey, we may not know that. So we may approve a variance for a setback and not realize that it's, you know, a two-story approval as opposed to one story because that's not noted in that survey.
Well, whether it be by drawing or written description or a combination of both, I do think we should correct.
So mention that in the, in the motion.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, I mean, I think if somebody's making something a two-story structure, in addition to showing a drawing, they should tell you what the dimensions of that thing. And to me, like you said, you want to know how big the thing is. So I think that that can be, that should be fixed.
Okay. So, so if we do require the drawings, then that would just...
The motions will reflect a vertical addition of whatever and certainly your motions can include those details.
Great.
My only other... The dimension, dimensions and the square footage. I mean, I think you, that should be automatic, that you know that information.
Okay, yeah, that would, that would be helpful. My only other question was, and I think we discussed this a little bit, but it might be helpful also when we are discussing if, on each application, if maybe staff could comment. I think, you know, you were mentioning before, maybe so we know kind of their opinion on it. And we have the staff notes, which is, which are helpful. But I think maybe sometimes if, without us asking you, maybe if...
A part of the procedure of meaning.
You maybe, you know, don't mind jumping in if there's something that we're missing or that you think maybe we should know that nobody's asked a question about, that might be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Sam.
Thank you. Amy, just to clarify, you said that each application requires an A2 survey, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then you said you had a few bullet points in terms of what other, what else is required for an application?
That wasn't for the application. I have the application and I have those instructions, which you don't see because you get page one and page two and then they tear off there. So if you want them, I have a copy for you to see sort of what they're, what they're required today.
Are there, I mean, would it be too long to go through those right now? What is required?
Well, and one of the things I'll, in particular, that we're referencing is that it says, if setback, height or area variance are required, include plans with elevations.
And that's currently required?
That's, that's what it's currently instructing them to do, correct?
Okay.
And then otherwise, yeah, it's pretty convoluted, fill out this. I mean, we don't need to go through that whole thing and go get your neighbors and such, but it gives them very, very, very detailed instructions of what is included. There is a discretion level at some point with plans, but when it includes an addition that affects your setbacks, your coverage and stuff, they are...
Okay.
Suggested, required, I don't know what our proper terminology is, to submit plans to demonstrate their full dimensions so they can paint the full picture to you all so you would know what you're making a determination about. We reference, and as Ms. Tada says, you know, could we reference the plans? We do do that already or should do that in motions and absolutely. And if they submit plans, we can reference the date of the plans that they submitted that correspond to the map.
So, oh, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, so at that point of submission, now what I will do, when you say bullet points, I had just sort of done six steps sort of of the process, really high level. You know, that was the taking it in part. The next step is, and this is where it falls apart when I'm not available all the time, is I will, whenever I can avail myself, actually have a conversation with these applicants to kind of preliminarily go through what they're submitting and perhaps offer some suggestions or we need this as well or we need that. I don't always have that opportunity because they come in at 5:05 on Friday.
Hey, I didn't, I didn't realize till tonight that you're only part-time. I commend you for all the work that you do for us in the short period of time here.
And I'm certainly willing to do that. I don't always have the opportunity again. And it's not always because it's just part-time. It's because there's a, people know they have a deadline and, you know, like human nature, we come in three seconds before.
Sure.
If I can, though, I will go through that and be able to verbally say, but, you know, this needs more. You're asking for a second story. Or reviewing it, I will pick up some more.
Sure. But it sounds to me that the current application process does require you to submit those dimensions presently.
With those types of applications, correct?
With those types of applications. So in the example that we faced a couple of months ago, they, it was, it was not a complete application.
That is, well, they did not submit any plans. That is correct, which is why we continued them.
So is there a way that we can, we can prevent the applicant, an incomplete applicant, application from coming before us? I mean, there's just, there's a cutoff. If the application is not complete, then they are not going to be seated in front of us for, for us to hear.
But I think that was the original question is what we can require as a complete submission. Is it incomplete or just we'd like more?
Even if they have to be on the agenda, you can say, this is an incomplete application. It will be continued to the next meeting. I mean, you could just say that. So, you know, maybe the application can, since it not, since it does require it, it's, you know, I mean, hopefully it's not a suggestion in the application. Maybe the language of that could be beefed up to say, your application will be deemed incomplete if you do not submit the following things. I mean, you can make it a little bit stronger so they understand that that's a consequence of them not giving you the information.
No, and so I just want to point that out because that's something that I think we should be doing because the last thing that I want to do is see us add more red tape or regulations, add more steps when it sounds to me that they're already required. These steps, these, these things are already required in the application process. And the last thing I would want to do is burden an applicant, you know, a homeowner, a business, when in fact, you know, these things are already in place. Why add more red tape?
You know, I mean, we can review them to see if it covers everything you think you want and then you could take a look at them and say, gee, I think this is missing. But, you know, I mean, in terms, I appreciate that, you know, it's deemed a burden, but they're asking for something that's of a serious nature and it's permanently placed on that property.
But they're required to provide that information already.
Right. So we'll just take a look at it, see if maybe it needs some fine tuning and, you know, you guys can read the, the applications and see if you, there's something else in addition to that. You know, and nothing stops you. If you get an application before you and they've completed the application, you may be sitting up there and talking about it and say, gee, I need to know A, B, and C. You're entitled to do that in your process. You can say, you know what, I, you know, I appreciate all the information you've given us, but I think we need something in addition and here it is and we'll continue this for you to get it. So, you know, planning and zoning does that, you know, when, in their applications, which can be pretty complicated and you don't realize that you may need to see something until you get involved in it. I mean, hopefully it's, you know, most of your cases are not that complicated, but if it is, that's, you're the trier of fact. If you need something additional, then you're entitled to it.
Yeah, but I just think at the very basic, I mean, the application already requires these dimensions and if they don't provide those dimensions, we shouldn't even hear the application until we receive those dimensions. You know, that would prevent us from having the issue that we had a few months ago.
I, just to add, you know, this goes back to that, but at the same time, you know, and we get some applications for garages, sometimes we do get a drawing of what the garage looks like, if you remember, think back, and sometimes we don't. And my thing with this is, is I want it all the time. I don't want it some of the time. That's why I'm, you know, I know when I did, when I have come for a variance years ago when I did addition, I had to submit it, you know what I mean? So I would, one of the things why I'm bringing this up and talking about is because I want it every time, every application, I want a drawing, whether it's a 14 by 12 shed in the backyard, I want a drawing. I want, just so there's dimensions, I want to, I think it's best for everybody.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you and I think my point is that the application process already requires that and we just need to follow the application process. And if the applicant doesn't follow the application process, then they, their application is not heard at that meeting.
And I agree with you. Only thing is I want it, I'm looking for it before it gets to us. That's what I'm, I'm looking for. I want it. I think we need it. But I also, I also want to see it, and there's another step that I had spoke to Amy on the phone about. And I want to, I'd like to see that, it's part of the, part of the application process, but sometimes we don't get it. And so I want it, it's not, not that I'm asking for architectural drawing, you know, you can spend 15 minutes drawing this out with a piece of paper and a ruler and put the dimensions on it just so we have an idea. The other thing, and I'm going to stop because I'm taking, letting everybody, I want everybody else to say something, is that one other thing I think we talked about with Amy was instead of having Friday the cutoff day, having it a day earlier or something, we discussed that correctly, the cutoff day for handing in.
Not the most recent, but, you know...
I think we said that on the phone, you had mentioned it to me, instead of it being Friday, maybe pushing it to a Thursday, being the cutoff for them to hand in a variance request. So that way there you, it's not last minute on Friday before a Monday meeting. Did we, I thought we talked...
I don't recall having that discussion, but, and I don't know if that's, is that a legal requirement?
I'd have to take a look at that.
Yeah, that may be.
Unfortunately, the way the statute is written, you can argue that you have to accept it up to that point in time, but let me double check. I haven't looked at that issue in some time, so let me take a look.
Only reason why is I think we had discussed it because Amy was saying that people come in at Friday, 5:05 and hand it in and they're expected to be seen on Monday. And she comes into work Monday morning and she's looking at this piece of paper.
Right.
That, you know, it's...
I completely agree.
And they're already been put in the paper because they started the process, but they didn't complete. And so that's what, all right, Lou, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I understand that it has to be accepted, but just because it's accepted, does that necessarily mean that it has to be heard in that meeting? Like, is there a way to...
You have more, you have, you have time.
Yeah, so is there a way to say that if we don't receive a complete application by such and such a date, that even though it's before the next meeting, that it won't be heard till the following month because of this cutoff?
I think we may be able to do something like that and then, you know, the applicant's unnoticed that they won't be heard at that meeting too. So it's not like, you know, they'll know that it's going to automatically go to the next meeting. So we could take a look at doing that.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything further?
Yeah, so what's the cutoff date for the application? Is that a statute?
I don't, I don't have the word of the statute, but it would basically be that Friday beforehand.
All right. So I got to tell you that I have to do this all over, all over the Northeast. And we have to, and we submit a detailed plan every single time and there, I don't see any problem with it being not a suggestion but a requirement. And this is okay. This is what I did for my shed because I wasn't paying an architect. But there's no reason it should be a suggestion, it should be a requirement. I agree with you.
Mr. Percy, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
The only thing I'd say is I think we should stipulate everything we want in the requirement so it's very clear to the public what we're trying to do. I mean, then there's no nebulous stuff, well, gee, I didn't think it was important, but it was important to you and not me. You know, you're getting into that, it's kind of, either say we're going to have this or we're not going to have it. Have it black and white. I think that's what you're saying, Mr. Conway. And keep it simple.
Yeah, I totally agree with everybody. I'm just trying to get it so we get it in our packet and it's part of the application process. So when we have a meeting Monday night, we're not looking at an application and it's for the applicant too. But go ahead.
I just wanted to add one thing. I like to have staff comment on every item.
Verbally.
Because I'm new at this and it's a little extra guidance for me and it's very helpful.
If you're willing to have me interject, I would be very happy to do so. I mean, I do submit your detailed comments, but if it's more helpful to hear them verbally as part of the course of discussion of an application, I would absolutely welcome that.
Anybody got anything else they'd like to?
Go ahead. Just for my clarification, I'm sorry. Just for my clarification, I think we're all on the same page here, that the requirements already exist. We just want to make sure that the applicant abides by them before they come before us.
And also, not just that I'm looking for, I mean, like, so we got this tonight, okay? And, you know, okay, straightforward. But in my, what I would like is a height dimension and...
But I think that exists, right? That is, that is a requirement that does currently exist.
But we don't have it.
Well, that's the problem, right? And we should not be hearing these applications.
Well, I think we're, our terminology, or we're on the same page, but I think what I was asking, Janice, more or less, is can, it is a requirement. Is it an in-house requirement? Can we make it a requirement as, to deem it a complete or an incomplete application at submission?
Yes, yes, you can do that.
Okay. That was the question in meaning, can we, you know, we can say we want all we want, but if they have the right to submit it with some minimal information, it doesn't include it, then it's going to come through.
Okay, the fact that you have to accept it as an application doesn't mean that you can't dictate what the information is and then say it needs to be at some point in time complete. It is more of a timing issue than a content issue. You can tell them what you want and they have to provide it. And if they don't provide it, then you don't grant their application. But this, you know, this whole concept of we have to accept something, that's because of the statute and that's a timing issue more than anything else. So that's what we're talking about.
So I think we're understanding everybody's kind of where we're headed with that and we'll see how it goes forward and where we end up. So at this point, I think we're going to go into executive session.
Make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to general Connecticut State statutes 1-225FN, 1-206, parentheses B, parentheses, to discuss CHRO versus zoning board of appeals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're in executive session. Make a motion, we come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes, Monday, August 9. Motion to accept the minutes, Monday, August nineteenth. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just gonna, we're gonna make a motion, I, I'll do it this way, just so it's on the record and everything. Uh, we have no receipts or applications for the October meeting, so I just make a motion that, um, we, we cancel officially the October meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.